Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our study session this evening. Today is September 8th, 2021, and we will be starting our meeting tonight with a study session, and we will be doing a marketing update. Terry Locke, our Director of Community Relations, will be presenting an update to our marketing plan.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It's our pleasure to present a rundown of our digital marketing campaign that wrapped up right at the first day of school. We've executed digital marketing campaigns the last four or five years through Cox Communication, but this year we wanted to ramp it up. We wanted to elevate our game in the digital marketing era, so we did that, and we partnered with First Strategic Communications, one of our great partners, and their partner off Madison Avenue. We're going to share some of the results of that tonight with you. But first, I want to introduce you to Sam Inkorbaya. She's our first-ever digital marketing coordinator. She is homegrown, a 2013 Basha High School grad. She also graduated from ASU and has four years of experience in the digital marketing world. So she's just, she's been with us for about a month, hit the ground running. She's been a fabulous addition to our department. So we're going to move through here. First of all, this one here?
Yeah.
We're going to go through tonight the following things, the campaign items. I'm going to run through the slides three through 16. I want you to see the digital, see the imagery, and I'm going to have Sam get into all the analytics later. She'll be kind of the, give you all the details from her experience and so forth. And we're going to show you how we're doing each of these categories, including the results, and then some future recommendations, and we're going to follow up with the "We Are Chandler Unified" new marketing campaign that we just began today, actually. First video went out today. So first, what we're going to talk about is the prospecting campaign. Now, the prospecting campaign is for people with no history with Chandler Unified. There's no digital history. They haven't come to our website or anything else, and we're trying to fish them in. It's like, it's a hard sell, a cold sale, and that's what it looks like. So this is what the first few slides are going to look at. We're going to show you what it looks like. So we went with a whole-child approach, because there's plenty of schools that do a lot of good things in certain areas. We like to think we're really good at a lot of things, not only great academics, but counseling and physical education and athletics and so forth. You're going to see that in these slides as well. So our digital banner ads is what some of them look like. You'll see the, "We focus on whole education, whole-child education. To the far right, we focus on opportunity." Next, we focus on whole-child potential. Next, we focus on whole-child growth. So we'll go back when, I'm sorry. So basically, over a span of about two months, you're going to see all these different combinations of ads. So something might attract you to one of them than the other one. So we, for two months, we went through, and we're going to share the data in a few minutes with you. We bombarded our community with this kind of messaging. Our Facebook ads look a little bit like this. We focus on whole-child education, because there's no single way to grow, no single way to learn, and that's really our approach in Chandler Unified. We have a school of choice for pretty much any learning behavior. And then again, the prospecting, education, opportunity, potential, growth. So those are just rotating around and online, and we're going to share the results in a few minutes. Instagram ads. Instagram is our youngest audience. We have a lot of kids on Instagram, and some of our youngest parents are as well. And again, you see the language, the education, opportunity, potential, and growth included here as well. Prospecting on Facebook and Instagram video ads. Let's go ahead and show you one of the videos. So we supplied all the images, the video and so forth. Mike Holland and his team plugged into this, but there's a number of videos we wanted to show you, give you a look at one of those. Gmail ads. If anybody has Gmail ads, Gmail? Well, you get ads on Gmail, don't you? And so this is what you look at here. Again, the whole-child education, we're consistent, and the potential, and then creating engaged learners, smart and well-rounded. That's what we want our Chandler Unified people to be, smart and well-rounded, not a single focus where you're at a school to do one thing in particular that a school is good at. We like to think that we're good at a lot of things, have a lot of smart kids. Now, all points media. We focus on the whole child education. You'll have buttons to click, including "Go to Whole Child to Learn More," "Enroll Today." We love that button, obviously. We focus on the whole child education. You're going to see, this is a different layout you have, depending on where on your screen, where you're surfing around, where you're going to approach that. Next is the retargeting campaign. It's different than the first one. Retargeting campaign goes after people who have some history with us. They may have attended our schools, but at a minimum, they have a digital history with. They've come to our website, but we haven't captured them. So there's a slight difference in the approach. We went with the A+ in all of our approaches on these. So Chandler schools make the grade. A+ in STEM, A+ in language immersion. Again, you see the different sizes, there are videos and static ads as well. Digital banner ads, music and sports are another ones. A+ in music for the number-one rated district in the valley, A+ in music, A+ in sports. See happy kids, good imagery and so forth. And some Facebook ads, again, retargeting group, bringing these people back in. Our A+ rated school district provides whole-child education and wide range of academic choices. Again, A+ rated for arts and STEM, sports and teams, traditional and classic, music and clubs, and so you're going to get this, just hitting you for two months solid. Okay, and on Instagram, very similar approach. Again, it's a younger audience, and it's, you want a little bit less language in those. So it's more about the imagery, the videos, and the photos. That's what that looks like, single image and a carousel. Gmail ads, images again. We make the grade, A+ in STEM, A+ in language immersion, A+ in music, and some other data. The whole idea is to show a picture and a sentence or two on Instagram and get you to take the bite. The executive summary of this, before I turn this over to our superstar Sam here. So we spent $50,000 on this campaign. It earned us 4.4 million impressions and 10,856 clicks. That's what $50,000 gets you, and we did that over a two-month span. And Sam's going to take us through some of the data.
Yep, absolutely. So then you'll start to see the same three boxes up at the top for the next few slides, just for reference. But then, what we want you to know about this slide is that this gives you a layout of like the Google Search and Discovery campaign results. So the education industry average for a click-through rate, and specifically for search campaigns, is about 3.78%, and 0.53% for discovery campaigns. Quick difference between those is that discovery are specifically for people who are open to learning like new things, so they're not necessarily seeking out CUSD, but they're interested in like similar areas, whereas search, you're specifically searching for CUSD. So that's a quick difference there. But then it also says here, our enrollment campaign sits at about 5.58% above the industry discovery average, which is really cool, because then that means that more people are discovering us somewhere. And so here, we also wanted to talk about our search audience that we received results on. So with Google's junior high search, that was actually the most popular result for us, which was really cool. And Google Search was divided into different keywords that were related to audiences based on the ages of the families. So that could include families with like preschool-aged children, kindergarten, elementary, and junior high. And our theory is that it's because people are searching for those specific areas, since it's a transitional time for those families. It's a big deal. You know, if your students weren't in school before, then you might be investigating preschool opportunities. Maybe your student's in elementary school, and you're looking at your different junior high options, so you're searching for that more. That's just kind of our theory there. And so specifically with the stats on those, the junior high search audience received the highest click-through rate at about 10.44%, but kindergarten wasn't that far behind with 10.42% on that click-through rate. And so here, we also have results for our paid social ads, and it's overwhelmingly positive for Facebook specifically. And so that's where we find that most of our audiences are on. They're on Facebook more so than Instagram, since those are the two we compared. And so with here specifically, it says our paid social ads showed noticeably higher click-through rates, and that, you could even see the engagement difference there. We've received a 0.48% click-through rate and about 2,000 post-engagements compared to about 1,000 for the retargeting audience. So, you know, back to what Terry was mentioning, with the prospecting audience, those are people who are prospective families. Maybe they don't know about us just yet, and then the retargeting are the ones, we're trying to refocus them on our CUSD initiatives and everything that we're about. And then here with the Goodway Group, they specifically looked at like key behavioral and ZIP code trends that would be important for us for future marketing. So here, you could see that there are different audience segments, and that includes people who might have recently moved to Chandler area, or they might have, might be predicted to move into our boundaries here in Chandler as well. We also have a variety of results from moms of preschool kids with families, and maybe affluent moms of younger children. And so, again, all these things are based off of like Google searches and things that people have expressed interest in, because the internet knows everything about us nowadays, thanks to cookies and analytics and everything in between. But our top-performing ZIP codes, they're by-site activities, and so you could see right there, 85225, top-performing one with about 45%, 85249 in second place, and then 85286 in third there. And so these are a breakdown of some of our Google analytics, and so this is a website overview of users that we've, that have visited our website. And basically, all you really need to know about this is that we had about 918,000 interactions. But what's really cool about the user count is that out of all those users, about 322,000 of them were new users. So again, really cool that we're spreading that message to new people. And then to clarify what sessions are, sessions are basically page loads, so for the amount of people who click into a page, you know, they could just simply be scrolling through a page, but then an event means that maybe they downloaded something, maybe they clicked on a link. So for each of those sessions, there was about one event, either of those things, downloading things or clicking links, et cetera. And then all you need to know about the bottom there is that organic was our most popular way that people found us, and so organic is like ways that, you know, we didn't have to necessarily pay to target those people to find our site, their non-paid search. None basically means that maybe somebody clicked on like a link in a PDF. It's basically something we couldn't track through Google. And so that's why none is probably like the second result there, and referral just means that we might have been on another website that wasn't paid by us. It was just referred to by another party. And so these are our Google Ads stats as well. And so going back to here, the difference between discovery and search, discovery, people open to new things, search, they're specifically searching for us. So you could see that we had a lot of great results there with impressions, people we reached out to who were through that discovery campaign specifically. And the click-through rate is about 1.73%, which is really great, because tiny box at the bottom, but it says that our industry average for the CTR, kind of like what we mentioned in the executive summary. It's measured at about 0.53%, and right here, it measured out to about 3.78% for us. So that's really cool. And so here, this is also just a breakdown again of the ZIP codes, specifically for our Google Ads and where they were popular. And so you could see that the most popular ones were actually the discovery ads up at the top here, where it says discovery, retargeting, and prospecting. So whether or not you were part of that either group, discovery means new people are seeing us, so that's cool. And then at the bottom, something that's interesting to note with the ZIP codes, it also mentioned that the Google Ads were really popular in these specific ZIP codes. And you could see 85225, 85268, and 85286. Funny enough, that middle one, definitely not a Chandler ZIP code. So we were thinking, you know, about a bunch of different theories on it, and it might be because it could have been user error for all, you know, maybe people were searching for the wrong boundary, but it could also potentially be people who are searching out of boundary and looking into the Chandler district as well. So that's kind of our theory there. And then here, what we'd want you to take away from this is that these are some creative performances with Google Ads, and you could see that discovery retargeting through Gmail ads did really well. And same with any kind of responsive search, specifically with kindergarten, had quite a few clicks, quite a few interactions across the board for both of them too. So then these are for the Facebook and Instagram stats. So here, overall, we had about a million different impressions, which is really awesome, and the click-through rate about 0.31%. And so overall, again, only thing you really need to know is that at the bottom here, it shows that Facebook, whether you're retargeting or prospecting, it does really well. So that's why, again, we're solidifying that Facebook, if we want to put dollars and invest into something, Facebook's likely the way to go. And you could absolutely argue, well, fund all your money toward Facebook, why would we bother with Instagram? But this is still helpful, because you could always, you know, like figure out a new campaign to maybe draw an audience on Instagram, because I've actually personally gone to a few school sites in the last few days to visit with people behind the social media accounts there, and a lot of them said that a lot of their young families are really active on Instagram too. So there is an audience. It's maybe just a matter of reevaluating what that language looks like in the visuals. And so these are some of our creative performances as well, with Facebook prospecting and Facebook retargeting. And so again, the only thing you need to really know is that they, the prospecting campaign did really well compared to the retargeting. So again, the consistent message, we're hitting new people, that's a good thing.
Those are our most successful campaigns, those two that you saw right there.
Yeah. And then this is the Goodway Group stats as well, so those go back to like the ZIP code results and those behavioral results that they analyzed. And so with our impressions, we had about 2,500 on those. And what you really need to know about this is that the display contextual did really well, and that basically means like things will show up for you on a website, maybe like a Chandler ad that was paid will show up on a website if the information's relevant. So something, maybe I'm trying to think of something off the top of my head, something like another educational school district, maybe, like a site like that, or maybe like Kumon Learning Center, that's education-related, so maybe Chandler Unified would show up there, because it's within the same topic area. So that's what display contextual means, we show up the most there. And then here with our creative performance, these, they had pretty low click-through rates, but at least their activities were pretty high, so there's potential there to like improve and see what we could do there as well. But those are some of the larger banners that we would have advertised throughout different searches. And so this is All Points Media, that's a third party that OMA worked with to make these banners that you see here. So we had about 11 signs that were placed throughout Chandler, and so you could see just, in tiny font, but it's there, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, ICANN, et cetera, total of 11 signs, and each of those had about a million, not each, but total, excuse me, had about 1 million impressions. And so there were QR codes that were on the bottom of these banners, and that's what those, where those impressions are coming from. It would lead you straight to the enrollment page if I'm, yeah, if I'm correct on that. And then these are some of the recommendations that we've gotten after doing this campaign.
Sure. So working again with First Strategic and Off Madison Avenue, their summary is, "Opportunities evolved assets to build upon the results of the campaign, optimize toward better results, and expand our reach. Off Madison Avenue would recommend a year-round campaign that focuses on awareness at a lower level during the off-seasons." We've talked about that as board members. This will keep CUSD top of mind throughout the year and on our platforms to continue to collect user data, which is important to us. This also helps capture parents moving to the area in off-season and seeking information outside of the enrollment time periods. During enrollment season, May through July, and really it starts in January, but that's the late kick, tactics would shift to driving conversions, using the data collected to retarget interested users, and using creative messaging to drive parents down the funnel to fill out an enrollment form. And there's also an opportunity for Spanish-language targeting. We're really excited about this opportunity. And uniquely translated, creative in specific areas, given the high density of Spanish speakers in our top-performing ZIP codes. You think about 85225 and how much traction we had there, we think there's a lot of potential to explore the Spanish-language area. There are opportunities with Google to build on the high click-through rates seen in the junior high and kindergarten audiences in search. Not a real big surprise, parents that aren't typically shopping for a school, going from first grade to second, second to third, third to fourth, fourth to fifth, except for last year. It was just a different year, and who's open and so forth. So last year threw everything off. But generally speaking, we're going to get preschool, kindergarten, seventh grade, and then high school, is where that interest level is. Yeah, a little bit more. Since the junior high audience is one of the most difficult audiences for the district to reach, the high click-through rate is encouraging to know there is interest. The lower conversion rate, however, indicates that there's more education needed for them to make decisions, and I know Dr. Gilbert has some ideas of having the junior high schools, what they mean, feeding into the high schools, and it's a six-year decision when you pick a junior high school. So we're going to explore that this year. Discovery campaigns allow us to target people who have visited a competitor's website. We'd love to do that. OMA would recommend creating a group of ads to specifically reach parents in our district who have visited competing districts or charter schools, and collecting that information and doing something with it, and language specifically for those audience. Facebook, OMA would also recommend keeping paid social ads on Facebook platform and its audience network, given the high click-through rates. The high click-through rates really indicate that the ads are really engaging, and that's why people are clicking on them, watching the videos like you saw, and that's very encouraging. There are opportunities within the platform to split targeting between different age groups. This would allow us to monitor the best-performing age group on Facebook, the same way we did with search and optimize accordingly. We can do ads to target digitally very young parents versus junior high and so forth. The sky's the limit what we could do. With social creative, there are opportunities to include multiple ad types to help increase engagement and click-through rates. Videos and GIFs tend to be, have a better result due to the engaging nature of the ads. It would be good addition to the mix of statics and carousels we're running as well. You saw the video, it's very encouraging, it was one of the videos. Finally, we would recommend expanding partnership opportunities as a year-round campaign to support awareness. During enrollment season, tactics would expand to include improved retargeting efforts with more user data collected from the site throughout the year, and focused ZIP code targeting based on results from this campaign. We can get as granular as we want to with this stuff. We also recommend collecting customer relationship management data, both for current students and for students lost. This will allow our partners to reach a more accurate audience through retargeting and look-alike targeting. This is especially important following the eventual loss of cookies and behavioral targeting. Cookies are going away. There's a lot of good things and a lot of bad things about our profile, but we'll be making adjustments in the upcoming years. There's an opportunity with Goodway Group to test longer-form content with native placements. This is a great tactic to educate and encourage parents, and could specifically support the needs of our junior high audience who are looking for more education. Now I want to talk about what we're going to move into. We're going to be, we started today, actually. The first video went out today. "We Are Chandler," and you're going to see, you can also see static things out there, "We Are Chandler," so forth. This is the first video we did. It's a little bit long, at a minute 12, because this parent represents two schools.
I have two children, and they both attended school K through 12 in the Chandler Unified School District. My daughter attended Hamilton High School, and she flourished there. The thing that strikes me the most is that her freshman year, she was introduced to the film program. Her film teacher was great, and I believe he was instrumental in shaping her career. And today, she went on to graduate from Chapman University, which is one of the top film schools in the country, and she now works for Sony Pictures in the Film Department. And my son, who also, like I said, went K through 12, he went to Chandler High, and I chose Chandler High for the IB program, which is great. He did very, very well there, and he was accepted into his dream school, so he will be attending Northwestern University in the fall. So I'm very proud of where they are right now, and I will forever be indebted to the Chandler Unified School District. I am Chandler Unified.
So that's the first of a number of videos we're putting out. Scott Hathaway and the rest of the team are working on those as well. Before we turn this over to Lana in two minutes, are there any questions?
So when I get on the, so you said the Spanish-language folks were pretty important. When I get on the website, there's no Spanish language of any sort. Would it be like really hard to get that automatically translated or run it through?
It does automatically, yes, the whole website.
So when you, do you have to have like a cookie history of doing Spanish to get on to?
It should be a language setting. So sometimes people might have a preferred language setting, and so because of that, it would translate that way.
Okay, you just can't see it when you get on.
Most people are surfing, they have their computer set for Spanish, whether they're going to ESPN, or 12 News, or Chandler Unified, or whatever else, they've got that setting already in place.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Can I butt in a minute? On our website, there is two in the band on the very bottom, like it has our school's district home, and there is a translate that you can click on that, and you can pick your language on the Google site as well.
If there's no other questions from the board, I want to thank you very much for the presentation. Sam, it's great to meet you, and we anticipate hearing from you folks again concerning marketing, and thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Nice to meet you all too.
It was our pleasure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, Sam Inkorbaya is a graduate of Basha High School, so she is one of our own and really flourished here. ASU didn't want to let her go right away, and so that was due to our late start of her just starting in August, first couple of weeks of August, and has done, has been very instrumental with the team, and has really, really done a good job of evaluating where we are and moving forward and just hitting the ground running. So I want to thank Mr. Locke and his team, as well as Sam as an augmented piece of our team, and really working with our social media exposures and expanding upon that. I think we're going to see some awesome things directly sent to our families and some great outcomes from that, so thank you very much.
Awesome. Thanks, Mr. Narducci.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Lana Berry. She is going to hold a public hearing concerning our 2021-22 budget revision number one. Mrs. Berry.
All right. Madam President, members of the board, if you'll give me just a minute, I'm going to log in so I can pull up our PowerPoint. While that's loading, I can explain what we're doing tonight, and then I'll pull it up so we can go through the actual PowerPoint presentation. But ultimately, you're revising a budget very early this year. Usually, you don't revise the budget, the annual expenditure budget, until December. Once the annual financial report from last year is completed, we go through all the completion reports with the state, and we, in October, fill out that annual financial report, and the board approves it. And then we revise our budget, because we come together and we put the carryover amounts that are accurate, not just the projections, and we update our revised budget. But this year, because the state took a while to get out the information related to the budget, and the budget session ended so soon, we ultimately revised, have to revise the budget because of the new budget numbers. And so I'm going to go through that tonight. There is a requirement that we revise the budget by September 15th, so very different than most years, and so that's what we are going to go through tonight. So hang on just a second, and I'll pull up the presentation. All right, so this will be our first annual budget revision. The next one will come on before December 15th. Usually, the first meeting in December is when we'll do the next revision. This is for fiscal year '21-'22. So the main changes that we're going to talk about are related to the maintenance and operations budget and to the federal projects budget. So like I said, the legislature ended at the very, towards the end of fiscal year 2021, and we had to put a proposed budget to bring to you, to approve, and then for you to adopt 14 days later in July. And so we had to use the numbers that they estimated from our associations, and originally from the governor's proposal, and some of the House bills we knew were going through at that time period. So we used those based on our best estimates, and then we had to make adjustments for those numbers that came out. So today, you're going to see changes to the maintenance and operations budget and to our federal programs budget. You're going to see additional changes in December, because we only have one piece of the federal budget still left. We still have another piece that we should be seeing soon through the governor's office. The maintenance and operations, special education budget was the biggest area that was changed for us, that and our base-level support. So one thing we fought for, and Dr. Marshall did an excellent job for us, she went down to testify and helped with this, was we've been fighting for special education for a number of years, and there was an additional $50,000 or $50 million that was put into special ed. We'd need a lot more money into special ed. The numbers have not been updated for years, for decades. And so one thing that we did get accomplished last year was we were able to take $50 million. Now, again, we have over 1.1 million students, and so that is divided, in a sense, over all of us, but we picked a few weights, and that was based on Dr. Marshall and a number of our directors of special education who came together and said, "How can we impact schools the very most, and where would that weight go?" And that, this was what was determined would impact us the most. So there was an increase in specific disabilities from one weight to another. So if a child is in our district, they get a weight if they have a special needs. And some of those weights are larger than others. And some of those weights are larger than others based on the need. For example, we might need a paraprofessional, we know, with a specific disability. We might have other services that are expensive, and those are categorized by the need. Now unfortunately, there was a study done in 2007 that showed we were grossly underfunded for special education. Unfortunately, nothing has been done since 2007 still for special education. So we know we have a problem, and, and that's been very clear, we've communicated that. They are going to do a survey, or they are going to do a study, and the Arizona Department of Education is involved in that. That is going to take a while, I'm not sure if we'll have that done by the next legislative process, because they're going to be doing that over a period of time. But at least we got the ball rolling in that we know we need to increase special education, and we know there needs to be a new study to justify what do we need to fund special education appropriately. But the weights have changed with the $50 million, and you can see those, they're listed So what did that impact mean to us? So overall, we had an adjustment, when you look at each of those weights in particular, with the different new weights, the total for us was an increase of $1.6 million. And so for us, every year, when we look at a chunk of money that's coming into us, we think, okay, we are between 3% to 4%. We get about 3% to 4% of all new money that comes into the state, because with 42,080 average daily members, and you divide that into 1.1 million students, that's about 3.7%. So if you were to take $50 million, we would have gotten, we thought, approximately about $1.8 million. We got 1.6. So again, there's different weights, and it's how many students are in those categories, and so that can differ a little bit. But that's pretty close, when you think about $50 million and around three, three and a half to 3.7%. So that increase for us is $1.6 million in those categories. And again, we spent a lot of money on special education and regular education, and because the weights have not increased, and it is more expensive to serve as those costs go up for those specific needs, unfortunately, that amount has not increased for years or for a few decades. So this is a start in helping us, it doesn't fix the problem, but it's a great start. Now, there is another piece of the budget that got updated correctly. So what happened was we estimated what the base, or the inflation amount was going to be to our base support level. And we were slightly over on what our estimation was. We used numbers from the Arizona Association of School Business Officials and the JLBC, but when they finalize it, they come up with the exact amount. And so we were approximately $7.64 over that overall amount that we projected. So ours was a little bit higher than what actually came to be. So that, when we times that by our average daily membership, that total amount for six, or $7.64, because that was, we overestimated slightly, was $448,000 for us. So again, we were using estimated numbers, and now we have to use the exact numbers the state put out. So when you add those two numbers up, they both impact the base support level. Our budget increase for special education was $1.6 million, and then the budget decrease for the base support level, because of the estimation of the inflation piece, was $448,000. The impact to our maintenance and operations budget is $1,172,810. So that's why we're bringing that revision back to you, is because we have to update those two numbers, that's important. And they, the State Department is requiring us to revise the budget by September 15th, and that's why you're seeing that today. Now, the next piece that I, that we have, this is not a requirement to do, but I, when I brought the adopted budget to you, and we did our hearing, we told you that we were going to receive gap funding. We had been negotiating that, that was part of the package. There will be two different pieces. One has came, it came out a couple of weeks ago, and it's called the Education Plus Up Grant, and that is going to be approximately $11 million for us. So of the $360 million that was negotiated, $163 million of it came out in the first piece of that, and that is what we call, have been calling, the piece of gap funding. The governor took his allotment, this is not, did not have to go to education, the $360 million, and this is a piece of that, but he ultimately utilized that for education. And so this $163 million is used, and it's, it can be used for learning loss and other academic needs that we have in our, in our district, especially related to COVID mitigation, all of those pieces. Now, how, how do we get there? Well, the reason we got there is because a lot of school districts received a lot of dollars here in, in our state. We got $4.4 billion came in. And you would think, Chandler being 3% to 4% of that, we would have gotten a lot more of that, but it's actually based on poverty, majority of that has been based on poverty. And since we have a low free and reduced lunch rate and poverty level overall, we got less than the average, we got less than majority of all school districts across the state. And so the school districts, there was a big discrepancy. So the ones that received less, one thing we asked for is can we get some of that additional money that came in from the federal government called gap funding? So can we take at least a certain amount, say every district should at least have this X amount of money per school district? And that, the governor and the legislature determined that that was $1,800 per pupil. We received a little over $1,500 per pupil, so that difference is not quite $300. We times that by our number of students who were with us last year, our average daily membership, and we are going to receive $11 million. So that, now, we can budget for that, we can't budget for the new piece until that is published by the governor, but we have updated our budgets by $11 million in the federal programs area. The overall revision, so you're going to see, we have, our maintenance and operations budget was $333 million, so with that increase between the special education and the decrease to the base support level, that's $1.1 million. Our new MNO budget is $334,286,700. Our capital stays the same on that side, because there's not a, we don't get a weight in capital, so you don't receive this, the increase, and it's not on the base support, because capital did not get an increase. We haven't had an increase since the 80s for capital, and so we didn't get, there's not an increase on that side. The federal programs is the update based on the new governor's grant for the $11,104,000. So our total aggregated budget increased from $415 million to approximately $427 million. And that's what you are approving tonight. So ultimately, we're asking you for approval to update the maintenance and operations budget and the federal programs budget on the actual annual expenditure revision number one this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mrs. Berry.
You're welcome.
Do board members have any questions? Then I think you explained it very, very thoroughly, and obviously, these are, there are not a significant number of changes to this particular budget, so I appreciate it, and thank you very much. Are there any, since this is a public hearing, are there any questions from the audience concerning these budget changes that we've had in the revision? All right, thank you, Mrs. Berry.
You're welcome.
We will, we will be starting our meeting at 7:00.